Catherine Babcock, Catherine, are you here?
Yes.
There she is. Okay. Were there other folks who wanted to speak as well?
Terry Delahaye.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Terry Delahaye.
All right, Terry.
D E L A H A Y.
All right. Any others?
Craig Hall.
All right. Very good.
Sean Lawler.
All right, we've got a full host tonight. All right, given the numbers here and the fact we only have a half hour because we've got to get down to our council meeting, we're going to have to limit everybody to about five minutes, I think, no more than five minutes and one to get through and I'll keep time and if I if and when I cut you off, it's not because I mean, it's because we want to get everybody a chance to to get to come in and talk. So we'll start it off Sally, if you if you want to join us and and as you come up, you can sign in after you speak, but just make sure you identify yourself for the record. So we have it on the other recording. So.
I have a caller as well.
Wishing to speak or just listening in?
Is Jamie calling?
Is.
Is that him? Is that Jamie?
I don't.
I'll find out.
Let's get going. So go ahead, Sally.
Okay, May 6, Councilmember Nelson states, one resident, and I mean, let's be blunt, some of the things that get brought up are in my mind nonsensical. That you know, kids use a playground. I believe he is referring to my concerns at the private business success academy that leases from Darrell Faruk was using the Smith Park playground for classes and recess. It is not nonsensical. August 2018, staff report states, staff recommends that the property owner install playground equipment for its students. The Minnesota Safety Council states play areas for different age groups should be separated. The Minnesota County's Intergovernmental Trust, areas for preschool age children should be separate from areas intended for school age children. The Public Playground Safety Handbook states, a school, on the other hand, may have no children under age four attending. This concern with success academy using the playground is not nonsensical. Bloomington Public Schools just sent an email dated May 14, 2024 to parents that states, in response to safety concerns, access to all school playgrounds and play fields are limited to Bloomington Public School students during the hours of 6:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Again, Councilmember states, Nelson states, some of the things that get brought up are in my mind nonsensical. What other things? Councilmember Nelson also states, unfortunately, a business that receives undue scrutiny over time. First of all, it is the city that is being scrutinized and it is not undue. I recall data that stated Smith Park was too small for the area it serves, and yet the city had first option to purchase the Smith Park field and did not. That should be scrutinized. A memo concerning the option to purchase the field dated October 18, 2010 states, the city would be obligated to pay the fair market value of the property, which is currently estimated at 411,000. The city paid to construct half of the field and practice area, paid for the field lighting fixtures, maintains irrigation system, mows and fertilizes, and again chose not to purchase the field. And about the fixtures, there is data about the possible loss of the fixtures dated January 2016 states. I haven't seen the closing documents, but it is my understanding the city fixtures were not pledged as part of the security in this transaction. As occurred, as had occurred without the city's knowledge in the sale to they bleeped that out. To clarify, the city fixtures were pledged as part of the security in the previous transaction without the city's knowledge. January 6, 2016, data also states, the bank is hoping to get agreement from the city in advance of the motion hearing. The biggest issue is the joint use agreement. The bank does not want to take the property subject to the joint use agreement. And the city is not really in a strong position on this issue since it was recorded so recently. The joint use agreement should have been recorded September 1, 2011. It was not. From city data, city council approved cuff with a condition that read to ensure sufficient off street parking, joint parking and outdoor recreation athletic facility usage agreements must be updated by September 1, 2011. It was not. The agreement was not signed until February of 2015. When the shared agreement was updated, it did not include first option to purchase the field. Data indicated at one time 72 drafts and yet did not include the first option to purchase the field. The city should be scrutinized because it chose not to purchase the field because of the original agreement included first option to purchase and the new agreement did not because the city fixtures were not secure and because the new agreement should have been signed in 2011 and it wasn't 2015. And returning to the concern from last listening session, the Darrell property does not have lights at the entrances and is therefore not city co compliant. What is the city doing to address this non compliance?
Council, any questions, comments? Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, man. Since I was mentioned here, I just wanted to thank Ms. Ness for bringing up the point that I do disagree with you on many issues. And yet the point of what we were looking at was the shared use agreement that included parking and the parks. And I brought that off of consent to have further discussion based on things that you had brought forward. So if your point is that I disagree with you on some stuff and yet still am willing to bring up other things. Thank you for bringing that to people's awareness. I appreciate it.
All right. The lighting?
Thank you much. Ms. Palmer.
Pam Palmer here to talk about fiber optics and for a long time I've heard Lona talk about she's gotten. And until this last month, I had no idea. So did everybody get the email that I sent? So I guess for the recording, I'd say that one of my concerns is that we have no way of really finding out what's going on. They don't label their trucks. They don't speak English. There sometimes there have been city people out there and they've been unlike utilities or public works people, you know, they've tried to help me a lot, but there's so much they can say. So what's concerning is how many fiber optic companies are there? How many, you know, if it was like, okay, what a mess. Here comes Comcast. They put it in and like last year when my two years ago when my yard was ripped up with the gas company. We only have one gas company. And good old, anyway, I got help from public works getting that cleared up. But this sounds like any fiber optics company can just, okay, now we want, oh, we want to participate. We want to be in that. Who's controlling this? That's my concern. And then those that what did you call it, Andy?
All the covers, plastic covers.
Yeah, those covers that go on there. Are they going to be maintained? Will they collapse? Will other fiber optic companies go into that little box? I mean, I've just been in my neighbor wrote to Victor's not here. Because he was just so upset about it and he claimed he didn't get full notice on there. And now I'm being told by Xfinity, they're going to be out. But what you're going to say the day before or at eight o'clock, oh, your cable will be out in the internet for the day. What if you're working from home or have stuff? So what control does the city plan to take on this?
Well, Pam, I can tell you. I worked on this issue 30 years ago when I was at the League of Minnesota Cities.
You have experience.
Have experience and I will say that based on a lot of pressure and a lot of money that was spent, cities basically lost this issue. And the public right of way is open to fiber optic cable companies and even into the streets is open. And there's very little that cities can actually do to control it. Now, I'm not exactly, I haven't boned up completely on all that's happened in the past 30 years, but that was the outshot of this discussion three decades ago, that there is very little control that cities have in the right of way. If especially when telecommunications or fiber optic companies come into town and want to put stuff in. There's very little we can do. We can control, you know, the hours of operation. And if they're egregious and we've run into a few things where they're leaving equipment in people's yards overnight or they're, I mean, just doing poor jobs. And we have actually thrown out a couple of subcontractors, basically saying you can't work here anymore, but it's it's very limited in terms of what we can do. Lona, you probably know a little bit better.
Yeah, resident nerd here. Sorry, Mr. Mayor. So so this, this is not, this is happening because of the dollars that have come from the federal government to increase broadband access around Minnesota and other parts of the world, right? Fiber optics is the next phase for high speed internet. You'll be able to get gigs, five gigs of internet service right now. Comcast Max you out at about a gig and you pay over a hundred dollars a month for that. AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, all of these US fiber, a bunch of other folks are going to be competitors. What's happening right now is the wholesale, the wholesale cables are being laid down. But the retail, what we know from a retail perspective is still unknown. In fact, there's a gentleman walking in my neighborhood yesterday from AT&amp;T. I picked up his card. They don't know what they're even going to price the, you know, the one gig and the five gig service for my neighborhood is at the moment. They just don't know. And that's on purpose, right? These companies are competing for our business. This is a positive experience. It should be at least. I, when I first started running for city council, I noticed that like, we only have two options in the city of Bloomington, which is incredible for a city of 90,000 people to have center, center point, no, sorry, Century Link at DSL rates, at DSL rates or Comcast at cable rates, and that's it. And most people can only get one of the two. They can't get both. I can happen to get both because of where I live, but most people you get one or the other. You don't get both. What we're going to have now is the opportunity for five or six people to compete for our business. That's generally seen as a positive in a capitalistic society like ours. So my hope is that that's good. But to the mayor's point, in the meantime, they have to do a good job of laying down that fiber, right? All of those boxes you're seeing are what they call remote terminals that allow for the junction points. So remember that the cable only got to the street. It still has to get to your house. The fiber still has to get to your house. All those places they've put are where you're going to be able to get them connected to that fiber network. But if there's four or five or six cable lines running in there, the right one needs to be connected to your house in order for you to get the right service. No different than when Dish Network or whatever replaces the satellite on your house to give you the right service.
So why aren't they leaving?
I don't want to cut you off, Pam, but we're at, we're trying to get a bunch of people in. Duly noted, and I think we've brought this up a couple of times that there have been concerns with that and we'll keep on it as much as we can.
No labels.
Customer service and.
English and, you know, so thank you. And yes, I know you were written by my neighbor across the street. So.
Thanks. Catherine.
Hello, Catherine Babcock. Thank you for letting me come in and share with you. On June 3, you're going to be asked to vote for a, an environmental review for the Kennedy and Jefferson Stadium project. There's a group of residents in and around both sides of Bloomington that signed a petition that felt that it was due the neighborhoods to check out all of the environmental issues arising from the construction of these two stadiums. Those things will be sent to you if they haven't already been in the form of the petition link. And then some flyers outlining each individual thing and the depth of the concern that we share for the environment. And I just want to give you a little example of that. For example, because of our proximity of one mile to the federal migratory corridor at the Minnesota River Valley, because of our relative nearness to the Nine Mile Creek Preserve area, we are concerned about impacts on wildlife, insects. We're also concerned about the light pollution dome that will occur when scatter, when light rises, it will scatter and hit those clouds. And the clouds will make a dome that will envelop this entire area. That's a fact. And then that changes the way that the birds migrate, that changes the way that the insects and everybody actually behaves. It's an impact on us humans as well as it is on animals and plants around us. Additional to that are noise events that would impact people and insects and bird migration. These are just some of the things that you'll find in that report. We have made such strides in having backyard gardens that increasingly pull those species into our yards and into our gardens. I live, I happen to live in the contiguous area to the river. And people are seeing, I have fireflies in my area and I'm right up at Old Chocopee. I have bats in my backyard and I'm right up near all of that traffic. But these two places of light where you're going to put light and sound have been dark since the beginning of time. There's never been an occurrence with this much light and sound in those two areas. And I think that we ought to take a look at just who's living there and who's migrating up into there. Because these aren't local issues. These are regional issues and these are actually international and world issues. Because if we look at the migration plan and patterns of animals, we look at light pollution, it impacts more than just us in this little neighborhood or me in this little corner of the neighborhood. And I know we want to act responsibly and environmentally. I also think that beyond the environment, there's a bigger question that needs to be asked here because one of the reasons they're bringing the football stadiums or the stadiums, the sports stadiums, because also other sports to these schools was one to attract kids and one to keep kids on the school campus afterwards. And while that may occur to some degree, I think maybe our vision needs to be more expansive in that if we build a school. I mean, I don't know how many of you have been into Kennedy High lately, but it's like a penitentiary. It's like, it's all guarded and gated and closed and the light is dim and dark and gray. And it doesn't feel like the kind of thing that I would want to send those beautiful children on the east side into that place. I wouldn't put my child in a place like that. And people don't have a choice, but why don't we look at building a beautiful school, building two beautiful schools? Now, I know schools are diminishing, but with your idea of densification because of your 2040 plan, we have to have a balance between the green space we take away, the urban space we pave over and the way that people live within that. I'll give you an example. Putting a, putting an increased stadium at Kennedy High, 500 seats to 2,500 seats requires parking a third of that, a third of 800, a third is 800. That would require 177 more spaces. 177 more spaces is equivalent to an acre or a football field's length of green space. Where do they get that? They're going to take away the lacrosse field behind the activity center and behind the pond center where the little kids play. So we're, we're running a real fine balance here between paving over too much of our city and not thinking maybe forward enough to bigger, bigger plans. If you got that whole quadrant there of Kennedy High and turn it into a science, art and, you know, visual arts and invention school, they could still have their great field. You pull in these wonderful kids.
Catherine, I'm going to have to interrupt. I've read it five minutes. I will say we're two weeks out from that meeting. And honestly, I don't think we have any information on it yet. I know we don't, we haven't read the staff report yet, so we don't have any of the information. But your, your input is appreciated and we'll take a look at it as we get.
I will be happy to send you some things too.
Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you much. Terry.
Terry Delahaye, I reside at 137 East 98th Street, right across the, from the campus, Kennedy Campus. I've got to kind of show and tell that happened in the past 48 hours here at some events that took place over the weekend and they keep overbooking these events. There were three events and there's not enough parking there. And consequently, people are very frustrated. And they parked, they parked in front of my driveway and I couldn't get out of my driveway. They parked close, closer than they're supposed to, to a stop sign. They parked in front of the fire plug. They parked on the green space on the lawn, on the campus there. And they parked on places that they're not supposed to, that are marked, demarked, non parking. So I'm very concerned about this stadium that's going in here and booking that and seeing more and more of the frustrated people. And if you have to do this, take away the green space and put a parking lot in there or put a parking ramp in there, or if you want to make this on an event venue, bulldoze the school and make an event venue. But you've got to do something about it because there's people going across Old Chocopee, 98th Street, these little, with little kids in their arms. It's just not safe.
So when, when, I hoped you, you called Bloomington Police. If they were parked in front of fire hydrants and if you
No, I don't.
Blocked into your driveway, I would hope you would have called Bloomington Police on that.
No, I've been had, had over the years, this thing went, all this went in in 2002. I'm, I've been here for 30, almost 30 years now. And I saw when, when they put.
When the activity centers went in?
Exactly.
Okay.
When it was 2002.
Okay.
And all of a sudden they're starting to book all these events and now they double booked, triple booked. They had three events going on. That's, it's insane. I don't know who's in charge of that. But they got to be educated that, hey, this is, this is not acceptable.
I appreciate that feedback and we'll, we'll discuss it. That is booked through the school district.
Okay.
It's not city booking at all. So it's through the school district. But obviously the things that they do, it impacts neighborhoods, it impacts our streets, it impacts certain, the different things that we have going on. We've got a good relationship with them and that's certainly something we'll bring up.
Yeah, one time they, somebody tried to, somebody parked in my, my driveway.
Yeah, that's, that's a little extreme.
And, and I, I checked two cars at the time. I blocked them off and I made the individual come up. And that, that individual was very outraged that I stopped.
That's kind of ridiculous.
Sorry.
Kind of ridiculous. Appreciate the input.
Yep.
And we'll, also we'll keep in mind as we have this discussion, continue this discussion about the stadiums. So thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Craig.
Hello, I'm Craig Hall. I live at 10217 Johnson Circle, so right next to Jefferson High School. And I sent a letter to these three here actually yesterday, but what's happened is that when we got the notice from the city back in October, it's that final program for the school district. And the question was, they really weren't discussing whether they should replace the one stadium with a new stadium or build two new stadiums. And they didn't do a lot of studies and we were kind of on our feet or, you know, on our heels, trying to react to that. So that's what my question is. I sent, and generally you responded, so thank you very much. But I sent you some things that probably need to be looked at. And the one I was going to talk about today was, I was out over the weekend watching at Jefferson where they had their events and people running across 102nd Street in between cars that just because they ran out, the parking lot was full, even the one over into Olson. Olson School is not being used, but the overflow parking for Jefferson is. And that people, you know, with little kids, just like he was saying, I didn't know he was going to talk to, but same idea. And then I went over by Kennedy and Third Avenue is a very narrow avenue, but it seems to be a big gateway to get to parking back by the park. And they park on both sides. So there's only really room for one vehicle to come through either way. So you're pulling off to one side or the other. So my thing is that basically we just probably need to go back to the school board because what they put through was their final proposal. And it seems to be keeping, it seems to always be discussed as that's the only choice. So if it is the only choice, then probably we need to look at how do we make sure that the residents don't have to put up with that all summer long and every holiday weekend or anything like that? Or was there really a separate program that could have happened where Bloomington stayed in this? So I've not lived in Bloomington long enough to know all this information, less than five years. But just something that, a lot of work, more work needs to be done because by the time we heard about it, it was last November. So once I met seven months. And a lot of things take a lot longer than that to make major changes and plans. So thank you for your time and reading my emails.
All right, okay. The input, appreciate it. And Sean.
Thank you. My name's Sean Lawler. I too live by the Jefferson Schools and Irwin Road. A little background. I'm a CFO of a company and Edina and have done over $70 million of projects. I've dealt with cities and zoning and all that type of thing. I want to thank my neighbors for sending out their, their letters over the weekend and, and with my travel schedule coming up, I don't have a chance to, to address anything in the future, but I'm all for these stadiums. We need to build them. I've lived here 20 years. When I first moved in, I was astounded like, what do you mean the football stadiums not there? What do you mean the lights aren't there? Why are we maintaining this other facility in the middle where our kids and Jefferson side don't even go to? There's no chance for them to walk to be more environmentally friendly and walk to it. I have two daughters that are in theater and show choir. I am also the high school coach for, for Alpine Ski Racing. So I have both Kennedy and Jefferson kids on my teams. So I do feel I represent both. I'm not here to talk about the Kennedy side though, because I live immediately close to Jefferson. With the environmental impacts, if you do go forward with that, I know it is an optional thing and you'll be getting your reports. My personal opinion is it's not necessary. You already have two turf fields. All you're doing is digging some, some footings, putting up some lights. The environmental impact of, if you Google just like that, you know, Texas had a whole thing about like they're taking down stadiums and they got mad because they destroyed the pet bat population because they were roosting under the stadium stands. Birds of prey love hanging out on top of lights. So maybe you're choosing the eagles over the mice on the ground. Like all those types of things. The other thing I'd say from a light dispersion issue, please take it into account. As they are used today, we are spreading concentrated light from one area and diffusing it across the, the campus of the entire city. Okay, now that doesn't mean there's not capacity to do more, but these lights are all turned off at 10 o'clock. Okay. And personally, if you've ever had your kids out on these fields, if we can divert a few, just a few more geese away so the kids don't have to play in, in the goose droppings, that'd be helpful. I'm all for, I, like I said, I, I live, I chose to live by a school. The final thing I would say is I'm not, I'm also very data driven and I would say look to Two Rivers. Look to Mendota Heights, West St. Paul, they did exactly what we were talking about. They had an old high school that they, that's my alma mater. That's all I know. They kept an old high school with a, with a stadium, field stadium that had to be mowed and maintained and fertilizer and herbicides, put down all summer long for eight games in the fall. Okay. And it was, it was just a waste of time. So they moved it to, to Two Rivers, which used to be Henry Sibley. And I did an analysis over the weekend just using Zillow best format that they announced it in 2017 and to today, if you look at the immediate, this is for our members there sitting here, the immediate six or seven houses next to Jefferson versus the same seven, eight, nine, 10 houses next to that stadium where the same issues were raised, our property values have only gone up 23% in the meantime. Theirs have gone up 45%. Investing in facilities, investing in our schools, investing in our kids is important. It needs to be done. This should have been done forever ago when, when these buildings and then the flip, the other part is Henry Sibley is, or Two Rivers has made, they were the 1970, they're built at the same time. They are dungeons. I went to school in a dungeon. They've revised it. They've taken that campus and turned it all the way around. And so I would ask the city council to look at what actual results happen in a, in a community that has the same, almost exactly the same demographics. We have the two separate campuses, but if you just take Two Rivers as one high school versus our high school, it is amazing. And they have parking spaces of about half. If you look at just the square footage, you do a Google Earth and, and that it's about half the size and they, I've been over there for football games. It's a wonderful experience. I'm also all for street parking instead of putting in lots. One is 102nd is an issue. That's an issue all the time with crossing. It still is an issue. My kids have made it across since they're kindergartners. They're now ninth and 10th grade. They're still making it across. It's as busy in the morning as it is going to be for any time there's a football stadium. But the enjoyment of my property does not change one iota. If I decide to stay inside on a Friday, sit in my house with my door closed, it doesn't matter to me that someone's parked on my street. You're all welcome to a city council, I might have a nice little fire pit there for you pregame. Build some community. I walk over with my neighbors and we'll have a good time at a, at a football or soccer game. So I appreciate your time.
And you get it within four seconds, Mr. Lawler.
No.
Very, very good. Did we ever figure who is not online anymore? Okay. Boy, good work. We got out of here at 6:15. Well done, folks for squeezing everybody in and getting everybody. I appreciate the conversation about the stadium. We, I know this was, we knew this was coming and we knew this is, is kind of been in the works. And I, it will, I, I'm looking forward to the conversation and looking forward to having that, the full discussion about all of the issues. Parking, economic or environmental impacts, the, you know, the, the sound of the band on a Friday night, all of that comes with it. I, I get it and we'll have that. And we'll have that conversation and we will be having that at our first meeting in June and we'll see where we all end up with that. But thank you all for coming in and voicing your opinion on that. I think that is everything, council, we've got to get down to our meeting. I would look for a motion to adjourn our listening session this evening. Motion in a second to adjourn, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. We are adjourned, thank you very much. Again, thanks all for coming tonight.